Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town of Camden Select Board Meeting for April 9, 2019. We're going to start right into our agenda, and we will start with any -- is anybody here from the public who would have any input on a non-agenda item? Seeing no hands, we'll close that item and move on to Select Board Reports.
I will start.
Off to a great start. I will start by saying that our Camden Roadside Cleanup, which was scheduled for this --
I think we should turn down the --
We're having a little technical difficulty moment. Excuse me.
Do they know that?
Who is it?
Taylor.
Sorry, we have some --
It's loud, but like, we can hear them. Yeah, no, it's because this TV came in volume.
No. All right, I'll attempt that again. The Camden Roadside Cleanup, which would be the -- will be the third and not the third annual, was scheduled for this Friday, April 12, and Saturday, April 13. Unfortunately, winter has given us an encore, and we feel that it may make it a waste of resources and just difficult and slippery, even if it's muddy and melted. So we are tentatively rescheduling that. This decision was just made for the first weekend in May. That is May 3 and May 4, Friday, May 3 and Saturday, May 4. And so more information will be published and published on the Facebook event. So keep your eyes peeled, keep your ears open, and we apologize. It's just an act of nature, so thank you.
You said the 12th and 13th. I believe it's the 11th and the 12th.
The 12th and 13th.
Okay, thank you.
Is when it was.
When it was, and it will be the first weekend of May, Friday, Saturday.
Thank you.
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
You'd like.
Sure, why not? What's going on? I'll just talk about the Opera House as always, because it's one of my great favorites. The dancer recitals this weekend were both were sold out, so they're very popular. April 19 is the next Blue Cafe, which is the third floor, free event, and Travis James Humphrey, who's a honky-tonk singer, will be performing there. It's become a very popular event, so looking forward to that, and I'll just leave it like that.
Thanks, Mark. Taylor, you're in?
If anyone wants to join me in praying for spring, then that's really the mode that I'm in right now.
I'd have to agree with that. Allison.
Last week, I had the opportunity to present at the Middle School Conference for Change, which is the third year that they've done this, and it's really one of my very favorite things of the year. For the last two years, I presented about New Day Syria. They invite members of the community in and set up -- they started calling it a mock conference. It's for all the students to get the sense of what it is to go to a conference, and their community members set up booths in the gym, and then the students get to choose breakout sessions based on their interests. And this year, I was able to present about a Town of Camden initiative, which is the McGonagook River Restoration Project, and a lot of kids signed up for my session, and I had a really, really enthusiastic response. So that was very fun to get to, you know, present not just about a nonprofit organization, but about stuff that we're actually doing here at the town.
Absolutely, absolutely, great. I don't have anything specific to report except the weather either, but with that, we'll close. Select Board Report's asked for any comments on the Select Board minutes of March 12 and March 26.
I have one comment on the March 26. There's a mention about the Opera House preventing the rear window film, and right before that, it talks about SIF doing a film every Wednesday, and it looks like the same thing, the rear window film was presented by the Opera House. It's not a SIF event, so they need to be separate. Other than that, there are a couple minor typos, but other than that, look good to me.
I have a couple things. On the March 12, Item 6, it said McKellar had concerns about leftover contaminants and how the projects under discussion affected the Riverwalk Extension Plans. I would say that was not my concern. The concern that I had is that we may be missing -- I wrote this -- may be missing an opportunity to address possible contaminants on the riverbank. So that was just -- okay, then there's -- also, it says, still, Item 6, McKellar referenced that the property will be developed in conjunction with the seven guiding principles carried forward at town meeting on the property. I think that should be taken out, because I think I said something that maybe they would have to be considered, but that could be taken out. And then, I guess, there was one place where it said National Registry of Historic Places, and it's register, not registry, but that's it for me.
With those changes, do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any more comments? All in favor? Five zero, thank you. Next, we have a request to hold a sidewalk sales on, I believe it's Friday through Sunday, May 10 to the 12, as part of the business is blooming in downtown Camden. Do you have any comments? There's nothing in the package or request in the package that I saw for businesses. Is anybody here from businesses blooming? Apparently not.
It's the same as it's been every year. I would move that we accept.
Also, yeah.
Okay, well, any comments? All in favor? Five zero. Next would be our Arbor Day discussion with the proclamation and a report on the Arbor Day celebration. Please. Nancy, welcome.
Nancy.
Just have to turn on your microphone by pressing the button there.
Okay, good. So I'll pass these out to you. Let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Thank you.
So I got a call about three weeks ago or so from Jan Amsteyn Terre, who's the Project Canopy Director for the state, saying that they wondered about holding the statewide ceremony in Camden this year.
Congratulations.
So I was really thrilled, and kind of right away, I thought that the amphitheater would be perfect, and called Nikki and my owners, and she loved the idea. So she offered the amphitheater at no charge. Usually, the rental's quite a few hundred dollars, I found out, for an event, and they will put out the wedding chairs and things. That would be really nice. They'll put up a tent for the reception, and if the weather's bad, it will simply be moved into the library, probably in the upstairs reading room.
Great. That's perfect.
Yeah. So if you have a minute, I thought I might just give you an idea of the Tree City Camden Arbor Day briefly, which you have in front of you.
Yes.
But anyway, in the early 1990s, soon after Doug and I moved to Camden, we were appointed to the Maine Community Forestry Council, and the Maine Community Forestry -- Maine Community Forest Department is now branded Project Canopy and has been for quite a few years, and they have a statewide citizen council that advises them. And so when we were down there at the state meetings, I learned about the Tree City USA program for the first time, and I thought that would be a nice thing to have for Camden. And that was 1994, and it coincided with when MBNA decided -- it was actually Bart Wood went to MBNA and talked them into giving a very big grant to plant trees in Camden. So that year, there were about 250 trees planted in the streets on Camden, and there were order forms like the garden club has for, you know, the few trees that they plant each year, but this was coordinated largely by the Conservation Commission, who was very active with trees at that time. Trees were their main focus during those years. And so, and, you know, the bids went out, and people chose from a list of about 15 to 20 acceptable street trees, and 250 trees went in that year. It was amazing, at no cost to the town and no cost to the homeowners. So that really, that was a great way to start off the Tree City USA program. What we needed was a tree ordinance. Bart worked with the Select Board, and he drafted a rudimentary ordinance, which we still have, because that's one of the requirements. And another requirement was to spend $2 per capita annually on the town's tree program, which we already were doing. You can include donated trees and grants and tree maintenance into that. And then we needed to have a tree board. The Select Board appointed the Conservation Commission as the official tree board, because it was the Select Board or the Conservation Commission who were doing so many tree projects, including at that time, doing an inventory of every street and public tree in the village, tree by tree. And they would go out, group of volunteers with Doug, who was the arborist, and Bart Wood and some other volunteers, and walk the streets systematically and record every single tree by location, species, document its size and its condition. So then, the first two trees that were planted were with the Director of the Community Forestry Program for the state who came down, and they're the two pear trees across the street. So that kind of started it. Then we proclaimed an Arbor Day and celebrated it that first year. So that started the program, and it's kept been going ever since. And so it's very exciting this year. Oh, my gosh. Where'd that come from?
Wow.
Allison. Yes, and there's our first Arbor Day celebration. Or no, that was number two, when we gave Beatty an award, and we were celebrating the re-elming of Route 1 that year with liberty elms, which since no one plants anymore because they aren't disease resistant. So pretty much, it's the Princeton elm that are planted. But that was our first celebration, and we honored Beatty. That was fun. That's great. So anyway, let's see. Yes, I was so surprised. Somehow, 25 years ago, what happened? Yeah, so this year, they will be giving the awards to 20 Tree Cities in the state, and they'll all have representatives who come. It should be really fun. The head of the Department of Forestry always gives a chat. Sometimes, the Department of Conservation Chair will come, and I'm hoping Amanda Beal might show up. And it used to be pre-Governor LePage that the governors came and gave out the awards personally, so that was kind of fun. You know, Angus King came, and Governor Baldacci gave the awards. Maybe Janet Mills will come, because it's a gorgeous place, right? Why wouldn't they come? Yeah, and so we're going to have tours of the parks and the library after the ceremony. And the ceremony will be on Monday, May 20, starting at 1 with refreshments, and then at 1:30 is the ceremony, and I'm hoping a lot of residents and town officials come.
And it probably won't be snowing.
Yeah, it won't snow. And the state is also giving us -- wants to give us a treat. And so I talked to Dave Jackson about it, to try to find a tree he might like this year, and he would like another one of the Prairie Dream paper birches, which he has a spot to plant in the amphitheater where one of the birches is aging out.
Right.
So, you know, we'll take care of getting the tree. The state will pay for it, and treekeepers will plant it.
Great. And I think you said this, but this is the 25th year for Camden Tree City. Is that correct?
Yes, it's the 25th Arbor Day celebration.
Okay.
And we're in our 25th Tree City year, because they don't give the award out until after you've successfully completed your paperwork and done everything right.
I see.
Yeah, we'll be getting our award. And I made a list of the cities.
Yes, I see that.
We were the eighth Tree City. Since then, one has dropped out, so we're now the seventh oldest in the state. And it should be a lot of fun.
Allison.
Hope you'll come.
So --
Any questions?
I have a statement first, but, no, a comment, that I just want to say thank you so much for all the work that you have done with this. I know there's a report, right, yes, you and Doug and the whole team, but it's not -- it hasn't just happened on its own. There's this report that gets done. Have you done it every year for 25 years?
Yeah, binder. I send in quite a detailed binder.
I mean, it's a ton of work in order to remain a Tree City, and it's not something that staff has had to take on really at all. Nancy has been the total guardian of it. You can call Nancy. I've had a couple times where there have been trees that maybe were going to get taken down unnecessarily, and you can call her, and she will tell you the history of basically any tree in town, why it was planted, who sponsored it. She'll go out there with Doug and give a report about whether it really needs to be taken down. Most of the time, the town doesn't -- we don't even have to pay anything, and we just get this expert opinion. It's so much work, and you have stuck with it so well. So many volunteers in town. You know, sometimes it's just ideas that, you know, people just want to contribute their ideas, but you two have just contributed so much expertise that we would have otherwise had to pay a ton of money for.
Yeah, no.
And, no, it's true. It's true. We would have had to hire somebody to do it, and it's very appreciated.
We enjoy it, and we take it to heart, and just today, actually, with a two-page treatise, a beautiful heartfelt tribute to a tree that Doug wrote, we saved a very important tree in the area.
Great.
Changed people's minds, and they had decided to remove it. So it's been quite a day for us.
And maybe would you consider on Arbor Day, doing a tour, like a walking tour of the area? There's that great brochure that details all some of the most important trees in town, and then there are others. Has it -- it seems like maybe it's been a while since there's been an official tour. Would either of you consider doing that as part of that?
No, we don't.
The ceremony itself goes for several hours.
Okay.
And then in August, sometime in August, I'm giving a program for the garden club, which will do the tour that I wrote.
Oh.
Yeah, so we could do that then.
Cool.
But sure, Doug and I thought maybe once the summer, it'd be nice to do a tree tour.
I agree.
The other thing I'd like to mention, however, which I didn't have time to write in there, is that I think it's really time now for a real tree board, because the Conservation Commission was focused on trees then, but now it's focused on many things and quite have their hands full. And I think it would be lovely, and I would like to see that happen this year, so I could turn things over to somebody else to have a tree board. And I thought there should be a representative from the Conservation Commission, the garden club, the Historic Resources Committee, some young people, a couple of young people from the schools, and, you know, then maybe five to eight or more community volunteers who want to be on a board. I have all the information about how to do a tree board. I could give them to read all of the bulletins to learn how to take care of trees and preserve them, and --
Can you help recruit the actual people?
-- Doug and I could commit to helping that this year.
I think the biggest thing holding us back would partially be just recruiting the actual people to serve on that board.
To do what?
Recruiting people that would be willing and interested.
Volunteers.
I'll get in touch with some people.
Well, thank you. DeMar, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was going to say, if you have some recommendations and people, that's what we need to get started. That would be great.
Yeah.
I did have a question for Doug at some point. I wanted to ask about the Emerald Ash Borer, because I'm aware that's now started to show up in Maine in two or three different sites, and I'm curious, have you had any updates, you know, more than what we know? You need to come up here to talk.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy.
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 Well, the Emerald Ash Borer started invading Maine and northern Maine from Canada, and now it's also been found in southern Maine, invading Maine from New Hampshire. So it's on the way, and the state claims that it moves at about the rate of 15 miles per year on its own. But of course, ash wood, which can transport the Emerald Ash Borer, is fantastic firewood. So the trick is keeping people from moving the wood around, so that's been a real problem. It has jumped every year much more than the 15-mile limit that the ore would normally make on its own by being transported in firewood. So, yeah, it's on its way, and I'll be -- our company's gearing up to start treating trees for Emerald Ash Borer, and we may start as soon as this year, so.
Wow. Thanks, Doug.
How soon, how ahead of the time? Is there a time limit if you treat a tree too early? Is there a point that it's too soon to treat it, or?
Well, there is. I mean, there is no Emerald Ash Borer in the area, and with any kinds of treatments like this, you're better off not using it if you don't have to.
Right.
Because it's, you know, being wasted in the environment.
Right.
It takes a certain toll on the environment by using something, despite, you know, whether the product created by an Organic Materials Research Institute lab or not, it still has an environmental effect, so you're better off waiting until you really need to use the product.
Thanks, Doug. Before I let the two of you go, Anderson, this is the year of 25s for you all, which means 25 years, this will be the 25th year of the Tree City, 25 years in business as treekeepers. Is that correct? And also, and more importantly, 25 years of marriage?
Yeah.
Got the whole package here.
Congratulations.
We survived both together. I also had to mention, though, that we've been getting a lot of calls about brown-tailed moth now, and there's more awareness of that, and then Willie Adeljed, of course, and the Emerald Ash Borer. And you might have seen the piece, the letter I put in the paper about that, which is, as soon as, now that a lot of people are worried about this, it's going to happen, as it creates a big opportunity for people to go out and say they have controls to apply. And in Maine, you could only do that if you're a licensed pesticide commercial applicator, pesticide applicator. And it's actually much more complicated to -- the exam is much more difficult and rigorous than to be an arborist, and it's more expensive to renew every year. It's quite expensive, and you have to keep careful records to turn in and all of that. So I have heard of somebody who's been offering controls, like last year, that is not licensed.
Oh.
So what I'm saying is, there will be people, maybe even arborists, who will say, oh, I can fix that for you. And they can buy it, but they shouldn't be using it unless they know how to use it in their license. So people should always ask that.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you very much for coming, Doug, too.
Organic controls also that you can request, even there are organic injections that work for all three of those diseases, so.
Thank you, Nancy. Thanks so much.
Do we need an official motion that declares that Arbor Day in Camden?
What is Arbor Day? We can --
No, it's a --
What does it mean?
It is a proclamation that it is Arbor Day in Camden on May 20, 2019. Yes.
So inside like this.
States, yes, yes, yes.
So moved.
Yes. All's in favor? Five zero. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
We have a -- thanks. Be careful out there, it's starting to snow. We have a request by the West Bay Rotary to have their use of the Upper McGonagook -- Upper Harbor and McGonagook River to hold their annual duck derby on Saturday, May 25, 2019.
We just said everything. Hi, I'm Peter Burick. I'm from West Bay Rotary, and we've been doing this for several years now. So we're, with your permission, we would launch 3,500 ducks, little plastic ducks, behind the smiling cow. They would go over into the pool, and they would go down through the falls, and then the winner wins fabulous prizes. What we are going to do this year is we're going to work really hard on collecting all the leftover ducks, because I know there's been some apprehension about that. So with Allison's help, we're going to kind of drain the pool afterwards and slow the water flow down, so we can go out the day after and clean up whatever we can. And in past years, I've been really trying to hold back from putting anybody into the falls to try and collect them, just for safety reasons. But if there's no water flowing, it's very easy to go out there and walk out there, and maybe we'll have a little contest on how many people can actually pick up. So we're going to do that as well, and then in, also in conjunction with Allison, to go, maybe, actually, a donation will be made to some of your projects that you're working on as well. So we're going to continue that. And it does raise, we usually have a net profit of around between $10,000 and $12,000, and all that money goes back to the community, to, you know, various programs.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, the race is going on to 5 o'clock. Everything is, so the tide is late this year, so it's nice, so we have all day to sell tickets, and we'll be out in front of French and Brown selling tickets soon.
Make fun.
Yeah, great.
I'll make a motion to allow West Bay Rotary to have access to and use the McGonagook River and Upper Harbor to hold the Duck Derby on Saturday, May 25, 2019.
I mean, as a -- And for the purpose of discussion. So as a point of clear, I mean, I think a lot of it, what you, do you need from us, the public landing? Is it?
It's the public landing that gets used the most.
So do we need to close that down at all?
Haven't in the past. We've kind of commandeered maybe three or four parking spots right along the wharf there, where the gangway, I guess, goes down to where some of the working, working part of the harbor is, and that's it. And we're not really there. We're there about two hours before, about an hour after, so maybe for about three hours total, we'll be down there. So that's up to you guys, but we haven't in the past, we haven't blocked anything off.
Okay. I think that's really what the approval, I, the only thing I hesitate with is just the idea that we have the authority to, because I don't think we do, to dump anything into the river. Yeah. But it's been going on, and it's kind of just like happens. I think we would be granting the authority to, you know, use the public landing or to hold the event, or.
Technically, you're correct.
Yeah.
We don't have the ability to authorize dumping anything into the river.
Right, but we have the authority to let them use, you know, to have a gather. I think there's language about the gathering and making sure that we have trash disposal and --
With the same intent, we could modify, if you would like to modify the motion to reflect that, that's fine. I think either way, it works.
Why don't I just simplify the motion, say authorize West Bay Rotary to hold the Duck Derby on Saturday, May 25, 2019.
Perfect.
More discussion from anybody, and all those in favor? Five zero. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you so much. Thanks.
The only other question I have is, could you clue us into which duck is the fastest one? Because my son keeps looking for it every year.
It's the one that wins. It's the one that wins. That's correct.
See me in the alley behind, you know. Just be one of the races.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Can I just say one more thing about this?
Of course, go ahead.
So, I mean, I'm actually really excited about this, because the, being underneath there, when we've been, we opened up this loose way to do all the investigations that we've been doing on the river and on the buildings underneath, and there is so much trash that gets stuck. It's not just, you know, you see ducks here and there, but really, it's all the other stuff that gets, you know, the laminated menus from the restaurants and all the things that might fall when people are eating their ice cream, and really, everything in the McGonagook watershed that, you know, doesn't get stuck somewhere else, gets stuck in underneath there, and it's alarming, the amount of things. And so to use this as an opportunity to say, okay, well, we're going to get all the ducks, but there's really, the bulk of the trash is going to be other stuff, and so I think organizing a good, you know, volunteer crew to really clean up, you know, underneath that whole area is a great opportunity.
Just, sorry, I'm taking maybe more time than I should. I'd love to get the Interact Kids, which is a junior Rotary Club, some of them involved, and if I can get some of them involved, yes, and then we could do it in conjunction with picking up everything.
Oh, and you don't -- Oh, and you don't even have to do it all. I mean, I'm excited. I can coordinate that part too.
Yeah. We can work together and, and, you know, I'd like to try and get as many volunteers as possible without making a circus out of it, so.
Yeah. And keeping it safe at the same time.
Safe, yeah. So, and that's the big thing. I don't want to have a bunch of kids running around in the falls and.
Safe as long as the sluice ways open up.
Right.
True.
Okay. Thanks again.
Thank you Peter. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the consideration of a new vitriol license application for Gary Oliver, doing business as Oliver's Bistro at 115 Elm Street.
Is Mr. Oliver here?
He is not. I don't see Gary here.
It looked like all their paperwork was in order.
Paperwork's in order.
And so I would move that we approve the application of Gary Oliver, doing business as Oliver's Bistro at 115 Elm Street for a vitriol license.
Correct. Second.
All's in favor? Five zero. Thank you very much. We're going to enter now into a series of public hearings. And I'm going to read the procedure for holding public hearings for issues and ordinances, et cetera. The purpose of public hearings, the public to express their opinion and for the board to gain a greater understanding of the, of the issue before us. We ask each speaker to come to the microphone and please speak into the microphone, identify yourself. And I'll, and remember, the meeting is televised and recorded and minutes are being taken. Each speaker directs all comments through the chair. And as a matter of courtesy, we'd like to have no verbal comments or applause from the audience as usual. After everyone in the public has, has spoke, that wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing portion and revert to discussions with the select board. Once the public hearing is closed, the board will not take any further comment from the public unless a member of the board has a question of a member or staff. We request to keep your comments brief and to the point. The first public hearing we have is a matter regarding the application of Gary Oliver, doing business as Oliver's Bistro at 115 Elm Street for a new Class III and Class IV malt and venus liquor license. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak for, against, or just speak to this item, this license request? Seeing no hands, I will close that portion of the public hearing on this matter and revert to the select board. Any comments by the select board? Motion?
I'll make a mo, I'll make a motion that we approve the application of Gary Oliver, DBA Oliver's Bistro at 115 Elm Street for a new Class III and Class IV malt and venus liquor license.
Second.
All's in favor? Five zero. The next few items we have, actually four items to consider that are part of this public hearing process. Two new warrant, excuse me, ordinance items and two, or amendments to existing ordinance items. The first item we will discuss will be the regulating the commercial cultivation of cannabis ordinance that's been, is being proposed. There were actually six amendments on this. Jeremy, would you like to just lead the discussion, each of these, so we know where we're talking to and people can comment more effectively toward?
Sure. I'm, thank you.
I guess.
Yeah. So what this warrant article will do, will amend multiple articles within the zoning ordinance, the definition section, administration section, special exception section, district regulations, as well as performance standards in two locations in, in the performance standard section. A little background on this, and you've heard this before, so this is for the hearing and for the public that may be listening. Over a year ago, the select board, well over a year ago now, it seems like now, maybe two years ago now, the select board appointed the Marijuana Working Group. Marijuana Working Group worked a long time on drafting some proposals to regulate marijuana facilities in Camden. They did not look at retail, they did not look at products manufacturing, they did not look at testing facilities. They strictly looked at cultivation facilities. Now, the way the state is regulating cultivation facilities, there are four tiers. There's a tier one, which is 500 square feet of canopy, of plant canopy. And then the tier two is 2,000, tier three is 7,000, and a tier four is 20,000 square feet of canopy after. So then the Marijuana Working Group worked on all this stuff. They crafted their proposals, provided it to the select board. The select board then moved it over to the planning board. The planning board held many workshops, discussions on what was, the working group had proposed. I had drafted some kind of compromise in between. And we held many more meetings on that. And then we held a public hearing on that, those proposals. And so in essence, what this does, this change will do, will allow only tier one and two canopies grows in town. And these are commercial marijuana cultivation facilities, only tier one and two. So that's a 500 square foot canopy and a 2,000 square foot canopy. And we have looked at indoor and outdoor. And I can go, if you'd like, I can go into little detail on it, if you'd like. But the tier one and twos on indoor are going to be, you need to have, all of these will need special exception approval. And they need to happen on an acre and a half or more, except for in some of the smaller districts like B4, BR Industrial District, and the B2, which are far more dense and commercial zones. And then you need an acre and a half if you're doing this in RU1, RU2, the Village Extension, and the CR. And outdoor grows, there was concern about odor. There are provisions in the performance standards that address odor, but the outdoor odor may potentially be an issue. So what, what's being proposed as part of the language is to have outdoor grows on five acres or more. And they need to be set back 300 feet from property lines. And so that should mitigate odor issues. And I think the planning board and the working group, I think ultimately, and some of the working group members came to some of the discussion, planning board discussions. And I think they were very supportive of the path that I had taken to this and the planning board had, especially in light of just allowing the smaller tiers to start to see what Camden's real feeling for marijuana cultivation will be. That's that. So multiple, if you, the definition section, there's like 30 or 40 different definitions that all fall into marijuana cultivation. So rather than putting those into all of the definitions, we have put those into marijuana. And then with underneath marijuana are all those definitions. So that's a better way to do it, rather than having to go through a definition section looking for definitions. Administration section is amended to require permits from the code officer for marijuana cultivation facilities. And then the special exception provision section clearly has separate standards in addition to the standards that are for special exceptions already laid out in Article 7, Section 4. And the district regulation piece goes into detail on the zones that tier one and tier two grows are allowed. And then Article 10, Part 1, Section 121 up there on the agenda is the performance standards for the shoreline zone, which would prohibit, specifically prohibit indoor cultivation facilities in the shoreline zone. And that is consistent with state law and shoreline zoning guidelines. And then Article 10, Part 213 are performance standards generally for marijuana cultivation facilities. And those would include setbacks from schools and certain town properties like the Snowbowl and the library. And then there's a whole host of standards. That's where the 300 foot setback is if it's an outdoor grow. Requires mandated security measures are in place in operational 24 hours a day, requires fencing for outdoor grows. You've got to comply with best management practices for agricultural operations. If it's an indoor grow, you have to address odor and have a filtration ventilation system that would address odor. And then no one, and this, a lot of these will be consistent with state law. No one under the age of 21 can be in that facility at all. And then there's a provision about disposable, disposal of waste. And then a provision for if you're going to use pesticides, you've got to be a licensed applicator, which is, again, that's state law anyway. And that's about it. It does require you to stay consistent with state rules. And just so people know how this works is if someone is looking to do, open a cultivation facility, what they need to do is they go to the state first. Well, first they'd call us and say, hey, can you guys even do these in town?
Right.
And then they go to the state, which is in the process right now of drafting their final rules, which will be to the legislature, I believe, in May now. And then ultimately, the state, I will say, the state is looking to bring everything online December 1 of this coming year. So there will be cultivation facilities starting December 1. But, so an entity would go to the state, the state would in turn say, okay, here's, you meet all of our standards, here's a provisional permit in essence, or provisional license. Now you have to go to the municipality where you're looking to do this because the law requires a municipality to opt in to these. So then they would come to our office and say, hey, I have this provisional license. And then we would guide them through the process that they need from us. And then once they go through that process with us and they get all their approvals, then they can take that provisional license back to the state with our signatures on it and say to the state, and then the state will grant them their license. That's how that works.
Great.
I know there's a lot there and I mean.
Simple, easy, quick process.
It is quick.
Let's, we can go back to Jeremy. We may have some questions for you, the select board. But does anybody from the public that would like to speak for, against, or just about the marijuana ordinance situation? I don't see any hands, so. Eleanor. Eleanor, could you come up? Your mind? Sorry.
Eleanor Mason Peters. You're presenting it, this was a public hearing, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So where does it go next?
Well, the next step would be, the select board would, would have to act on this warrant going to the ballot in June. The next step after this would be to, on the 23rd, if it's approved, to go to the 23rd for the final warrant language to be printed on the ballot in June.
Oh, okay.
But we're, but tonight is when we're voting on whether it's forward or backward to the ballot.
Yeah. Yeah. Tonight the select board will vote whether or not it goes to secret ballot in June or not.
Oh, okay.
Tonight.
Why would it not?
If we vote against it. If the select board votes.
And the public would, after this, public would have nothing to say about it? Or?
I mean, the voters get to vote on it in June. If we vote.
If you decide not even to put it on the ballot.
That's correct.
Then it's over.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's the town management, former government.
Okay.
I mean, they could do a petition.
Could be a citizens initiative.
Yeah. That's going to, I mean, the planning board already did. It came to us before for a concept approval. The select board said yes. Then it went to the planning board. They held a public hearing.
Right.
But that is the process. Yeah, you're correct.
Okay.
Thank you Eleanor.
I will, I mean, since there's not a lot of public here, I will say that the planning board did, held a lot of meetings on this. A couple of them, one of them had more people, and it was the one right before the public hearing. Interesting, no one came to the public hearing that they had and spoke for or against it, but the one prior, there were, I don't remember, maybe five people that came. And I think three or four spoke in favor and said, great, thank you for taking this step. And then I think there was one person that spoke against it.
Absolutely.
But overall, I think it was a good process and it was very out in the open, as much as we could have made it. We had many meetings, they're all advertised, hasn't generated.
Multiple articles in the paper.
Yeah. It hasn't generated a lot of public opinion.
Diversity working group.
Yes.
Well, with that, since there's no, I'm going to close the public portion, doesn't mean we can't ask questions of any public person, but revert to the select board for any comments, discussion, or questions. Go ahead.
I would just like to say I was at almost all of the planning board meetings. And if Jeremy's been working in this for a long time and gone through many changes to, to get it, to refine it to where it is today. And I think that if he was given a nickel for every time he had to give that speech, he would be giving tonight's report from the south of France or somewhere like that because he's put a lot of time and a lot of effort to really craft this the way it is tonight. So thank you for your efforts.
Sure. And I love the Mediterranean, so.
Any other questions? Select board comments, discussion?
No.
Motion?
I would move that we approve the, what's, what does the language have to be this whole? Can I just say?
Yeah, you can summarize.
That we move the cannabis, commercial cannabis cultivation language forward to the June ballot.
Second.
Six amendments. Any other discussion? All's in favor? With that, five zero means that that, this, this regulation will be amended, but these six amendments and that the select board will receive on the April 23rd, select board meeting, a final language that will be proposed for the June secret ballot. Because it has to be approved that night. I say that because the 24th, the next day, it has to go off to the printer.
Correct. And it's pretty well done.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's fine. Okay. With, with that, I will close the discussion on that matter and revert to a discussion of the regulating of the location of certain fast food restaurants amendment, two amendments to ordinance. Jeremy, are you going to do this to that topic, please?
Sure. And just a little clarification, and there's some just wording that's not right on the agenda, but it's right in the ordinance. It talks about certain fast food restaurants. It's actually certain restaurants, formula-based restaurants is what this is.
Formula-based, not fast food.
Yeah. And that's my typo, and I'm sorry about that in what I sent to Janice, but that's my fault. But the ordinance is very clear on what this is. So a little history on this, again, would be going back nine or 10 years ago, Dunkin' Donuts had come to town looking to come in. I think people became alarmed about Dunkin' Donuts and the potential impact on the, on the town, in the location in town and where they were looking downtown. And at the time, there were about, I don't know, 600 people were very vocal about it. There was a, a, I'm having a brain cramp.
180-day retroactive moratorium.
Yes. A moratorium was, was looked at, and I think, as I understand, that was voted on, and the initial one.
There's been some gray area about that.
Either way. So in, at the time, there was a moratorium was, was thought about, at least. And at the time, Dunkin' Donuts went away. And then I think most people thought that there was still this prohibition. Keep in mind, we have this prohibition on drive-through restaurants already.
Right.
In existence in town. So this would have been a walk-up Dunkin' Donuts downtown. They went away. And when I got here, a little over a year ago, another entity, Dunkin' Donuts, was the same entity, I don't know if it was the same owner or same franchise owner, came into town and was looking and talking to me about it. And as I understand, people came to me and said, well, well, they can't come here anyway because we prohibit them. And I said, well, you actually, we actually prohibit the drive-through. We don't prohibit a formula-based restaurant from coming into town. And people were very concerned about it and approached me about drafting some regulations to look at the appropriateness of where they should be located. And keep in mind, it's really hard to prohibit uses in, in a municipality in the zoning ordinance constitutionally. So what we did was worked on, this one was same amount of time. It didn't go as far back with the working group, but we spent the planning board and I spent a lot of time on, on working on this one. And we crafted a purpose section, which I think goes into great detail on why there was a need and why the town felt there was a need. And I've included that in all this paperwork. And really trying to frame the definition on what a formula-based restaurant was, was the, was a challenge. A lot of communities across the country have done this. There's a couple in Maine that have done it, were the third. But, and I was trying to use a lot of definitions from other places. They didn't seem to work all that well. They didn't seem to work all that well. People wanted something a little more straightforward and a little more simple. So what the planning board and I, and the public helped in this process on drafting a definition. And maybe I'll just speak to the, I'll just read the definition since it's quick. "Formula-based food service establishment is a food service establishment that stands alone or with other uses that is required by contract or other management arrangement to serve a prescribed formula menu and to use a trademark, logo, service mark, or other mutually identifying name or symbol that is shared by 50 or more other restaurants, regardless of ownership or location." So we spent a lot of time, planning board did, on this definition. And finally, I think we got to a good place. There was concern, they didn't want to prohibit everything, but they wanted to at least be able to be inclusive at the same time. Now, and I say prohibit, that's the wrong word because we're not prohibiting these from town. We are just saying where they can be located. And what this ordinance does would, it defines it, and then it allows this specific use, again, formula-based food service establishment, to be in one zone, and that is the B2 zone. You cannot open one of these in B1, in B4, downtown, in the B2.
CR.
CR, obviously, yes. So...
I live. I want to put in my neighborhood. That's okay, go ahead.
That's actually a perfect spot for...
I will say the public hearing on this was pretty, the public hearing was quite, I thought, great, because it gave me a sense of, you know, we do, like planners, we do a lot of this work, and planning board does a lot of this work, and sometimes there's select board members there, but that's it generally. And we're sitting there kind of toiling over with all this stuff, wondering, are we getting this right? And there were some people, and I, Josh is here tonight, that were kind of been through it all along, but at the public hearing, I was surprised. I walked in and I was like, whoa, what are we gonna get tonight? Because there was, I think, 20 people showed up. That's the biggest planning board meeting I've had yet. And I thought, okay, are they there for the marijuana cultivation? And they weren't. They were there for this one. And they didn't speak to the marijuana cultivation.
It was so funny. Did anybody watch that? See, you're watching Jeremy go through this whole long thing. All these people are listening to all the marijuana, there's no doubt marijuana is like proposed to be allowed in Camden, and they all listened to that? Nobody had a word to say?
Had a word to say.
And then it was like, but marijuana, fine, but fast food restaurants, let's do everything we can to keep that out.
So...
Maybe proud of Camden.
So, but there were about 20 people showed up, and I don't remember, and maybe Josh can speak to it, I'm sure you're gonna come up, but I think there were about 12 people that spoke...
Maybe about 12, yeah.
In favor of this ordinance. Some people actually wanted to go further and say, okay, let's not just look at food, let's look at retail too, formula-based retail. And, you know, I appreciate that, and I understand where they're coming from there, but this is specifically formula-based food.
Right.
And so you had a good turnout at the public hearing on it. And again, this is not, does not prohibit them from coming to town, this just restricts the location where they can go.
Correct.
So, and I think there was an article in the paper that kind of got the headline wrong and really messed things up. And I think that's why some people came out that other day.
I agree, that's why, you had 10, 12 people there. But with that said, I want to revert to the, anybody from the public would like to speak for, against, or to this topic? Josh?
Joshua Moore from Camden. So I basically just want to say thank you guys for taking this on. 10 years ago, it was obviously a topic of great discussion. Some of you were sitting with me in the audience then, and I'm happy to see you guys up there now. But the reason for this is the same today as it was in 2009. We, we had an applicant then that I wouldn't, that raised an issue with what Camden is, what makes Camden special. Made us all kind of, you know, caught us all by surprise, frankly. And as I, as we've said, it was a long process. I think there was the moratorium, my understanding was there was the moratorium, but then we didn't extend it, I think. And so we just sort of let it die.
Correct.
And, but the planning board did, at that, at the select board's urging, take up the discussion and look at, okay, this was obviously an important issue, how can we go further with it? And, and honestly, I think what happened was it went a little too big and got a little too broad and ended up being too big a problem, too big an issue to handle. And, and it, and it died, honestly. And that was a long and, I can say, painful process. It made the moratorium look simple. So I'm very pleased that we have, that the town has chosen, and Jeremy especially, has chosen to take this on and has kept it focused and has kept it to something, he found a solution. You know, a lot of people said, well, we should just ban them all and all of Camden. And maybe we could do that, you know? It is possible that we could ban certain types of businesses. I think that by finding the, the zone where a formula, the largest formula business in the country, if not the world, already exists there, that's Subway. I'm pretty sure Subway is the biggest one.
It is.
So, yeah, so he found, or someone found the location, and this is a great solution. So I'm just really pleased to see that. One thing, and some folks may have already heard this, so I apologize, but I think it does kind of explain why we're doing this and why I think this is worth putting to the voters, because that's obviously where the ultimate, if you choose to send it there, where the ultimate decision will happen. And this is this quote that I found, that actually cited a gunquit in 2004, that said, quote, "In a time when so many cities are ringed by identical sprawling boxes and overrun by ubiquitous chains, uniqueness has become a rare and valuable asset. Those communities that have protected their distinctive character and maintained many one-of-a-kind businesses are more interesting places to live and visit." And I was just, there it is. That's why we're doing this, you know? You know, there's financial studies that show how much, the trickle-down effect of keeping money within the community, because local businesses, independent businesses, more of the money stays, stays locally, et cetera. And, and we can go on and on for that. But as I said, this, this was a long process, so thank you, Jeremy and Jeannie, for pulling this together. But this is a tightly focused, reasonable, defensible, Bill Kelly has gone through this with his very fine, fine comb. So thank you for, for taking it up and any questions.
Thanks, Josh. Anybody else would like to speak to this amendment to ordinance? Not seeing anyone close to public discussion, revert to a discussion by the select board?
I'll do it.
Yeah, I just want to say thanks to Jeremy and everybody that worked on this. This, I think this one had the capability of becoming a slippery slope, and, you know, I certainly think that Josh pointed out an important point that Camden has uniqueness going for, and that's something we want to value. But at the same time, we don't want to say, I don't feel we want to say anything that resembles being any anti-business, saying it's important that, you know, we value business as well. And by simply saying, if you meet the specific definition, here's where you can set up shop. And that, that feels like a very smart way to do it to me, so thank you for, thank you for putting in the time. Sure, I would add, in the purpose section that I wrote for this, that there is some speed, some verbiage about the comprehensive plan, which I think is important. So, you know, this is part of the record, so I'm just sharing that.
Part of the record, also downtown master plan.
The planning board found that.
There's a survey in there.
Well, the voters didn't vote on that, so.
167 people voted on that. Sorry, I had to get that in there. Allison, do you want to say something else? We, we, sorry, we're entertaining ourselves because it's snowing out, but go ahead.
I think I'm gonna let Jenna speak for me.
Jenna?
Yeah, well, as someone who was there with Josh 10 years ago, we put a petition out, and there was an overwhelming amount of energy devoted to it from boots-on-the-ground volunteers, and then select board and planning board went through it. I think that what happened is that, like Josh said, it not only died because of its complexity, but because there was no longer this imminent threat, or a perceived threat. And the space that they did want to go into was the building right across the street. So that corner building where Leonard's is, or, or maybe it was the first space, I think it was that one. And we had a petition at the Stop and Go, we did an event downtown. It was, I think that there's still actually an active Facebook page, that's not really active, but Camden Citizens for Unique Downtown Business. I, it took a little bit of convincing for me, the number we had talked about in 2009 was six.
What?
Six.
Six what?
And so the state definition for fast food is 20, I believe.
And they, the state uses 20 when it comes to dietary guidelines, that they have to post the caloric, caloric content, and that's where that 20 comes from, just so you know.
So I think that this is, this is a very reasonable ordinance. As Taylor said, I don't want us to appear as though we're not business-friendly, but I also think that it's really important for us to preserve our downtown and to get something on the books. It is widely perceived that there is something on the books, because there was a lot of media coverage, there was a lot of energy, as I said, and a lot of discussion. But we're wide open to anything like this just popping up right downtown. And I think that it's important for people to have choices, but I also think that we can preserve our, our historic village by doing that, by enacting this ordinance. So I fully support it, and I'm very grateful to Jeremy, my fellow select board members, members of the public and the planning board for getting this moving forward.
Thanks, Jenna. Mark?
I just wanted to clarify a couple of the issues. As, as we know, there, there was a newspaper headline that may have confused the issue. And just to clarify a couple points, at this point, before this gets voted on, there is no law at all, whatsoever in Camden, that prevents anybody from opening any kind of shop in town. So this prevents that, but it also allows small, maybe entrepreneurial chains, for instance, if like a gelato fiasco, which is headquartered in Brunswick, I think has a second store in Portland, they could open here. It allows that entrepreneurship to, to, to happen and flourish here. And what it does is, as Jeremy mentioned, the U.S. Constitution prevents totally eliminating the possibility of anybody, you can't...
Correct.
...prohibit everything. But what this does is it prevents anybody from opening a large fast food franchise type of operation anywhere except out near where the subway is, where there already is one existing, in that, in that small area.
Just to clarify, I would say the B2 has a little more in town than that, there's the stretch over by Ham &amp; Lumber. But I'm just, there's a couple lots over there.
But what it does do is it protects the downtown and keeps the, our business area downtown totally protected and, and, but still open to entrepreneurial business that give us a nice, refreshing change in town.
Thanks, Mark. What, Jenna spoke for you? Oh, that's good. I just, I also want to add, Jeremy, I think you and the planning board did do a good job at balancing, this is, these are very difficult, almost impossible, and I still, I still believe they're impossible to define. All too often, in other municipalities, when they run down this road, unintended consequences came out of these ordinances, it's very common. To the anti-business thing, yeah, you know what? It's already out there. The news media's already mentioned this one. Whether it adds to, if there is a perception of it came to be an anti-business, that's kind of a done deal. But the only thing I would say is to this whole issue of downtowns or what we want it to be, that's the key. Here, we are really responding to a past situation that occurred that we prefer not to occur again. At least, the voters are gonna vote on that if we approve it. But classically, economies of towns like ours, the economy of the vacation-supported part of our town fights with the economy of the residents, those of us who live here. They're gonna conflict all along. A lot of the downtown is utilized by vacationing people, a lot of downtown is used by, utilized by us. That, that has a, I just want to caution, that as we go forward and talk about what you mentioned about retail, commercial, that is absolutely huge. And most, most municipalities have failed miserably at trying to define not what they don't want, but what they want in their, to have in their town. It's not easy, because we live in a dynamic environment of business, where businesses are changing all the time. So I just, my caution is not so much to this specific amendment, because I know the voters would like to, you know, cast their vote on this issue. And by the way, for me, the thing that triggered me to lean towards saying, maybe it's not just a bad deal, is the 50. I would have preferred it to have been 100, but 50 is better than what was talked about. Because if it was anything less than that, I would have had a real problem with that. Because, why do I say that? Because there are lots of businesses, wonderful businesses, fast food, not fast food, excuse me, formula-based food, that are really exciting, and many states want to attract them. And that, you know, if you have one in every other state, you're at 25, you know? You know, it's not rocket science. But then, you know, it went a long way to, you know, I think it swayed a lot of people, including myself, about this, but caution to the future. Because I know personally, from my experience, I'll be very much more concerned about what we do, if, if we do with retail, commercial kinds of operations. And that's a complicated equation. Each one of us has a very different opinion of what we want to see downtown for stores, and that's a very, very tough one. But that said, if there's any other comments, we would go to a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we move to the ballot, the regulating the location of certain, what's the term again?
Formula-based.
Formula-based restaurants.
Second.
More discussion from any of the five of us? No? All's in favor? 5-0 and, a 5-0. Into the meeting minutes, we will require that the warrant language for these two amendment change, two amendment changes to the, to the ordinance be presented to us on April 23 for final approval, which, which will be actually printed on the ballot in June, secret ballot. Continuing with the, I'm losing my page here. Continuing with the public hearing, we want to discuss the public hearing on amending Chapter 6, which is miscellaneous ordinances regarding local food sovereignty. Would you introduce, introduce us to that one, Jeremy, please?
Sure. And if you recall last, was it just last select board meeting, I think we had this conversation?
It was.
We had a little discussion on it. This is kind of a growing movement, but it's something that's been around for a long, 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 long time.
In the state.
What's that?
In the state.
Well, I think in most states. I mean, now I see, was it Minnesota, North Dakota, I think just did, just passed one, and similar in Wyoming did as well, and they're actually a little more robust than, than what Maine has done. But so, back in 2017, and I think it started prior to that, the legislature had crafted a bill, Craig Hickman, the legislator from Winthrop, he's a farmer. And what this does, they tried to craft a, a law to exempt, and this isn't really an act, to recognize local control regarding food systems. And this food systems is, you know, I make stuff, something in my house, and I want to sell it to Allison or Taylor, you know, or anyone. And prior to this, you would have to get licensed by the state food program or Department of Agriculture if it's a market. So what this does, this allows a municipality to adopt an ordinance to say that we're using home rule and we are going to, for the most part, exempt, you know, not require state licensing in town if we're selling producer to purchaser. You can't retail this at a store, and this can be anything from cheese to pickles, to blueberry jam, to pies, to muffins, to whatever. As long as, and then the state did modify this to prohibit the meat and poultry. So if you're processing any meat or poultry or using that in the product, you cannot exempt locally licensing or whatever. We're gonna pull all licensing of chicken and meat products in Maine. So that's why they have the, tweaked it. So now, you house producer to consumer transactions, they've been going on forever in some fashion or another. And a lot of communities, I think, will be the 46th, or maybe 48th now at this point to adopt this in the state. And these are from small towns, you know, Blue Hills of this world, Northport, Augusta, Rockland have done this. And really, I think the intent of it is to really allow someone small to do something on the side, out of their house, or out of their farm, with the idea, hopefully, and maybe someone who's an entrepreneur can say, you know what, I really like to do this, but it's so costly to put in a kitchen and get licensed, so let me see if I can really make a go of this, and this is something I want to do. And turns out that that's, it's happened, where people will, they do that, and their business becomes so thriving that they end up getting a commercial space and get licensed. Because again, you can't, I can't make... can't, I can't make, take something and take it to Hannaford or French and Braun and say, hey, can you guys sell this for me? Can you retail this for me? You can't do that. This is consumer, our producer-to-consumer transactions only. So.
With that, well, I can only, you have to open it up to the public to see if anybody in the public would like to speak to this, these two amendments. Eleanor, please.
I spoke about this last time, and I think I'm going to bring it up again.
It's fine.
The concern about the sanitation requirement, and I know there isn't a requirement now if people do that. And I just wonder if there's a place for that. I mean, to put that in there. I don't know. I guess other communities aren't concerned about that. And it wouldn't have to be like a big, major licensing, blah, blah, blah process, but some kind of oversight. Because if somebody gets sick now, who do you call? If you're in, if you have a license for restaurants, say, the state comes in and they oversee it. So who is going to have anything to say?
Jeremy, respond to that question. That's a good question.
Do you have any other questions, or do you want me to answer that one right off the bat?
I don't know. Tell me what you want to say.
So I have the same question, and I talked to the state health inspector about this question, and he's, they've had to deal with answering this question. They have not had to specifically deal with this specific situation yet. But they would treat it, the CDC would treat it like they do any other, any other foodborne illness, much like the one, right? There was the poisoning up in New Sweden, like 10, 12, 15 years ago at a church, and it was, I don't remember what someone put into the food, something.
It was arsenic, I think.
And CDC got involved. It's similar. You know, we do a lot of bake sales and churches do community suppers, similar thing. If someone got sick, everyone knows what they consumed in the X period of time before, and the state comes in and the CDC comes in and does their investigative work that they need to, and they can pinpoint, and they'll do the same thing for this. And they have committed to doing that, and that's their role.
Thanks, Jeremy. Thank you. Any other questions? Any other comments, Eleanor?
I will say, just to add, one thing that Camden, this ordinance does that no other ordinance that for food sovereignty does is we require that you provide notice to the patrons stating the following: that this food was prepared and processed in a residential kitchen or farm-based kitchen by one or combination of the following methods: a sign posted in a conspicuous location at the point of delivery of the food to the customer, a label affixed to the food container given to the customer, and/or a note card letter provided to the customer at the point of sale. So that is something that this ordinance does that no other ordinance that I've seen does, and I think that gives that added notice to someone that says, you know, I mean, at the same time, you know, there are some places I may go in and I'm certainly not going to buy their food. There are some restaurants in the past that I have been in, just doing some of the work I've done in the past, I would not go in and eat anymore. So because the state licenses annually, I mean, I appreciate what Eleanor is saying, I really do, it doesn't necessarily guarantee you safe food, you know. But I think you need to know and what this, the intent of this is, that you know your producer and that you get to know them and you're comfortable with it. But.
Thanks. Eleanor, do you have any more comments you'd like to make? Thank you so much. Thank you. Anybody else in the public who would like to speak for, against, or just talk to this amendment? Okay, we'll close the public hearing portion and revert to Select Board. Any comments from, discussion from the Select Board?
Allison's got her hand up.
Allison, go.
Jennifer?
Jenna? I very much support this ordinance for a lot of reasons, mostly because it gives the ability for someone, as Jeremy presented and laid out so well, someone small to do a very small operation, and also gives the patrons the opportunity for choice. I can go into a restaurant and have any, I mean, any restaurant, and have a beautiful dinner with foraged mushrooms that came, that are on the menu at a licensed restaurant, and I could get super sick. I mean, it, this has, there's a lot of flexibility, you know, in the licensure of what a restaurant serves as well. And I just think that this is, we actually, I believe, would be the 53rd town. I think that 52 have done it so far, and some may jump in before we get there. It's been going on for a long time. Jeremy, you seem, nobody has had to deal with major issues as a result of it, and I think that it just makes all the sense in the world for us. And so, and also has that ability to let someone start on a small basis and be, and be in compliance and have sort of some support and some guidelines. So I really would like to see this move forward.
Thanks, Jenna. Anybody else wants to speak, just like, yes, Ms. Allison?
Yeah, so I also am very much in support of this. I think that in many cases, people will still choose to become licensed. There are many different kinds of licenses, and for, you know, one person, it might make more sense than for another person. For my friend Marcy, who has a farm stand, and they grow all their food there in Rockport, but if they were in Camden, they're able to have a farm stand, but they can't sell pickles because the pickles that are cooked with vinegar falls into a different category. And so for her to go through all of that process just to be able to sell these pickles, it doesn't make that much sense. The benefit isn't necessarily there. But for, I was at this meeting in Lincolnville, and I heard people talk about the process for state licensing of dairy products. And I may only have part of the picture, but it seemed like the process was really quite easy and that there were some great services provided by the state. And after I listened to that, I thought, you know, somebody would be kind of crazy not to go through that process and get licensed. And so I think that I'd rather attack that from the side of educating people about here, there's this opportunity to get licensed, and educating people about the source of their food and encouraging people to be informed. So the more that they understand that, they might say, you know what? The fact that that guy down the street has chosen to not go through this very easy licensing process for milk might be a really big red flag. And it really comes back to just knowing the source of your food and providing more opportunities to do that. We know that, you know, the carbon footprint of our global food system is really intense. It's, you know, and especially the factory farm-based aspect of that and animal and meat products. And so allowing people, making it easier for people to sell, you know, non-meat products to their neighbors. I think in most cases, anybody that really wants to take it to the next level is probably going to go through the licensing process. But this, in a lot of ways, just legitimizes what is already going on all the time with bake sales and, you know, selling this or that to your neighbor. And making that operate in a sort of black market of don't ask, don't tell, doesn't, doesn't make sense. So I'm very enthusiastic about this.
Thanks. No major comments. I think, you know, I call this an incubator. Hopefully, people use it for incubators, business incubator, for developing, I hope they'll develop businesses out of it. There has been experience with those who have tried to abuse this kind of an approach, and we'll be certainly watching out for that. But you don't throw the proverbial baby out with the bathwater. So I think it's a, it's a good move for the town of Camden. With that.
Sorry, one question. Can we get, I thought Eleanor asked last time about seafood.
About food.
And.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's right. Yes, thank you. I forgot about that.
Can we, I don't know, the fact that poultry is pulled out, what's the, I think, I agree with you that I would say seafood is included in all of this. Do we have the legs to stand on with the language? Is that how?
I don't know. I mean, I assume it's included in meat, but what, can I email Craig Hickman tomorrow?
Is there, because we have talked about it as if it does include seafood, I would suggest that specifically adding seafood, that word would not be a substantive change because it wouldn't change the intent of everything. If we've been operating under the assumption that seafood.
Seafood is.
What about people who are selling picked crab meat along with their lobsters? You can think of some in Rockport.
I'm glad you brought this up because seafood is more dangerous than meat in most cases. It has, tends to get spoiling a lot faster than meat does.
Is your feeling that the intent has always been to include seafood?
I do feel that that's the intent of this ordinance. I think that there may be actually more people that would be affected perhaps in a coastal community by that, but I do believe it's the intent of the food sovereignty.
I do, too.
Rule. So yes, that, to speak to your question directly.
Specifically insert it to be.
I think to be, what we're doing is we're clarifying a term.
That we've already discussed.
That we've already discussed. And so the word, excuse me, the word seafood should be insert, for clarification.
That's fair.
Thanks.
And first, you definitely separate seafood.
From me. You do.
Yeah, I would agree. I would agree. I'm glad you brought that up.
Right. So I would be concerned that somebody would then look at this and say, nope, it's standard practice is to say that all separately, so.
And I would say that that's not, I mean, I would encourage it's not substantive.
It's not substantive. It's clarification.
Exactly.
Right.
All right. So I'll just add that in there.
With that said, any other comments from the Select Board side?
Let me, so this means that when the middle school is selling cookies and pies to raise funds to have the students go to Japan, we can arrest them for it?
Oh, no, they can be arrested. No, I'm like, no.
But we might lose in court.
Yes.
So we're no longer going to be treating our middle school kids as criminals?
Right.
Right. And there is another thing that allows, there's an exception for one day, Jeannie found it, that, that some of those things might not be illegal.
Yeah, there's an exemption under state law that you can have, like, suppers, you're allowed, those community suppers, once every month.
Yes.
So 12 a year is what the state has an exemption on. So when it comes to school bake sales, I know my daughter's raising money right now to go to their trip to Europe next year.
Mm-hmm. It's allowed.
Does not go there right now?
But I think it would be okay as long as the child that made the cookies are the one selling out, right?
Yeah. Any other discussion from the Select Board members in motion?
Just not brought in from Rockport.
All right.
Do I hear a motion for?
I will make a motion that we amend Chapter.
Six.
Six miscellaneous ordinances to add a new chapter, Local Food Sovereignty Ordinance, and amend a Chapter 7, the Camden Police Orde, oops, I'm sorry. That's just, let me re-motion that.
You have to slow down.
Amend Chapter 6 miscellaneous ordinances to add a new chapter adopting, or the Local Food Sovereignty Ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion?
As clarified today.
As clarified.
As clarified, to include seafood.
Yes, she said that. Any other discussion from any of the Select Board members? Halls in favor? 5-0. That ordinance amendment will go to secret ballot in June, and on April 23, the Select Board will want to approve the exact language that will be going on to the ballot for this amendment to Chapter 6. Lastly, on the public hearing items, there's an amendment to Chapter 8, which is the Camden Police Ordinance to Add a New Ordinance Entitled Clean Community Ordinance. Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak? Oh, no. Jeremy, why don't you introduce this one? There's not much to introduce.
This is for Jeremy.
It's not mine, but I reviewed it, and there's one non-substantive change that I think needs to be made.
Go ahead.
There are a few non-sub, like, some.
Made some edits. Edits are done and finalized, some typos.
They were done. They were done.
After Anita's.
Yes. Those are done and fixed.
Yes.
Okay. I have an.
Subsequent on Section 6, I think meant to say prior, not subsequent.
That was also included in Anita's.
Yes. That, so I've added that. That's like the one wording change.
I have additional wording changed. Well, unless you already included.
Do you want to do an inter, talk about what it is first before you?
Sure, 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 sure.
That'd be a good idea.
Do you want to go? Do you want to talk about it? Or do you want me to?
Let Jeremy do it. Then we can, you can always add to it.
Oh, good. I haven't heard Jeremy talk about this yet. Let's.
Purpose.
Go for it.
See if he does it correctly.
Okay, I'll read the purpose. Camden possesses unique natural assets and amenities which enhance the value and enjoyment of the community by residents, businesses, and visitors. These assets are irreplaceable and must be preserved and protected in order to allow the public's continued enjoyment of these natural resources, prevent nuisances, protect public health and safety, and protect the safety of wildlife. Thus, this ordinance is intended to provide for the uniform prohibition throughout the town of Camden of littering in its many forms. In addition, it is the intent of this ordinance to prevent the accidental scattering of litter from unsecured loads and uncovered receptacles. Standards and prohibitions outlined in this ordinance shall also apply to the town of Camden and its employees. So in essence, this is a good, I think, a pretty good, robust littering ordinance, is what it is.
Yep. But that, is there anybody in the public who would like to speak for, against, or just to this topic? Now, seeing your hands, we revert to the Select Board for discussion.
Yeah.
Are there any other changes you need to make on this?
Oh, yes. I wanted to.
Time to get them all in.
Right. So.
They're non-substantive.
There is the word.
Yeah, but it's non-substantive.
With the balloon part.
What section are you on?
I'm trying to find it. Okay. I'm in, on K, I guess, Section 3.
Yeah.
No person shall sell or distribute any balloon filled with a gas lighter than air without affixing an object of sufficient weight to the balloon or its, and this is actually not a word I've ever said out loud before.
Yes.
Yep. To counter the cape of, the capability of the balloon, and there should be, to counter the lift capability of the balloon.
Yes, you're right. That's a, that's a non-substantive.
Else is it capable of?
Yes. That was what we were asking for.
Absolutely.
So.
Absolutely.
So this would actually, you know, very, very clearly include balloons and intention, you know, the intentional release of balloons in the town of Camden would be codified as that counts as litter. The state, I think, is trying to do this same thing right now. I don't know, did it go forward?
I was down there for a hearing, and I sat in on this one, was right before, and it was fascinating. And I would be shocked if the state does not adopt the, ban the balloon launching.
Although, there was all this stuff, and I submitted comments, too, and it made me nervous because they wanted every balloon retailer to have to register.
Correct.
With the state, and I was like, oh, my gosh, this is not going to work.
The DEP, I will say, came out against it because of some of the licensing requirements and working on the shoreline zoning issue that I'm working on right now, what they're into the work session piece. So this is where they end up probably unraveling and pulling that stuff out. So I'm pretty confident that it'll move forward. I was shocked and listening to some of the stories of lobstermen and people that spend their days out on the water and just.
Yep.
Horrific. Yeah. And it's not even just our, I mean.
Just in case the state doesn't do their thing. But what would, ours would do in addition, and I scoured really all of the littering ordinances that I could find anywhere, and then all the balloon ordinances, and, you know, because what I've seen a lot is that it's the unintentional losing of the balloons, too. Pretty much every birthday party I ever go to, somebody loses a balloon. My, I personally have lost balloons, even trying very hard not to. So there are lots of states that have laws about foil balloons because when they, they mess up with the power lines, I guess.
Navigation and airplane.
Right. So they, those all have to have these, you know, weights attached to them individually. So we added that requirement to include all, you know, all the balloons. So if you get a free balloon at Hannaford, it's got, it would have to have something enough to weight it down. This also would make sure that pet waste is included among, you know, things that can't be left where they shouldn't be left. We really didn't have much.
We didn't. We didn't.
This would also allow the police department to issue tickets that would not have to, and similar to the way our parking ticket system works. So a lot of the time, what I hear is that it's just so difficult to enforce these state littering laws because then you have to take the people to court and blah, 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 blah. This will allow them to say, okay, here's your ticket. It's half the civil penalty. So if normally the littering fee would have been $100, $200, then they can get a ticket from the town of Camden that says if you waive your right to go to court, then your fine is only $100. That was something the police department had said would be helpful. And then this also has a series of things that would reinforce best practices in terms of just keeping construction sites contained. You know, I see in Camden lots, lots of accidental littering where you've got a big dumpster that's just open and the wind blows and everything's going all over the place. And we didn't necessarily have something clear. My only concern is with, you know, it's typical that the police department is the enforcement agency, and I don't know if there, if. agency and I don't know if they're, if adding in, you know, that the code enforcement officer could do it too or if that's.
They can't, code officers can't write tickets, so that may be a challenge.
A support role, I suppose.
I will say, I talked to Randy today.
That was just to that topic, there were some comments made by individuals about the enforceability and I know we discussed this, or you discussed this today, I was gonna ask you to relay that conversation while we're here.
I don't have the numbers, but he went back and looked at what, what his officers have been doing in terms of litter this year and.
Rockport also.
And in Rockport. And they were more this year than years past. And he thinks that his, you know, his officers are, understand this and they're gonna, I forget the guy's name, one of his.
Wes.
Wes is going to do a.
Training.
That was part of the union negotiations.
There you go. Good job. So he's ready to do that at any time. And, you know, he's confident that they'll, I mean, the challenge with all of this stuff, I mean, they have prosecutorial discretion, so, you know, they're not gonna, if, if it's blatant, I guarantee you the police officers are gonna be dealing with it.
Right.
And, you know, I think you gotta trust that Randy and his, his crew can, and will do it.
Yeah, and it's about setting priorities too. And what I've found is that when the select board has taught, when we have all said, you know, this, we want it to be clear that this is a priority, I've noticed a definite change. And, you know, that's all the police department can do is try to respond to what the priorities of the community are. And I think the more that they hear, you know, that, that, oh, I have a concern about this or about this, then, you know, the more that they'll try to solve those problems.
I was talking to Randy today about this and I said I was behind a contractor that had an unsecured load and I was up on John Street and I was following him on, and there was just stuff, you know?
Of police?
Well.
Sorry.
No, I did not. Sorry.
That's what you have to answer, Jeremy.
But here's the thing, I mean, there was, and there was a police officer over there and he was, he was, you could say he was, he was sitting in his vehicle, but he was working, like you saw it when I drove by, I was like, thinking he was gonna go, but it was very obvious.
I'm porn.
I know, but he was sitting there, he was working on his computer doing reports. And I mean, I think that, that happens. But if, had he been following him, I guarantee you he would have pulled over, I mean, I would have pulled him over.
How many times have you seen that in the police splatter? It's really not frequent. You do have to train people to notice that it's a problem and, because sometimes it's just like, you know, they just see, don't.
Well, unsecured loads on contractors, trucks and trailers are, are an easy one and I think that they'll, with Wes focusing and Randy focusing more on it, I think they'll do it.
And they respond by saying, because when Randy was in here, he read us off, these is, this is the number of complaints we've received on this issue. And so they respond to complaints, that's the system. And so more, and he was very clear that it's absolutely okay to call and complain about this, there's a non-emergency number that you can call or you can just call dispatch.
I should, hindsight 2020, I would have taken that guy's plate, plate down and called.
Yeah, you've gotta call because that is the signal to them that the public is concerned about it.
Saw that trailer and truck the other day too, so maybe I'll follow them the next time.
It's never too late.
Does any other select board member have any other comments? Please.
I would just like to say, and I've said this at one of the prior meetings, it's, there's not a single person that I know that hasn't learned since they were two years old or three years old, that littering is not good. And the fact that we have to do which, something which I think is incredibly important is so disappointing that people don't get it, but I think it's really important that we impress upon people that we're serious, you know? And I think directing the police department to make it a priority is really important as well.
Yeah.
Because it's, it only hurts ourselves when we litter and we need to, it's disappointing that we have to tell people that they can't litter. I'm always amazed at that, but it's, it's essential.
You know what else this does, which I think is important, and we haven't had a means to deal with it other than calling someone up and saying, hey, can you real, go deal with this? Is the, the trash can overflowing or the dumpster overflowing or the dumpster with the lid off and the seagulls are in there dragging stuff out all day long? I mean, I, I've dealt with that, I deal with that, I honestly deal with that every, every week, very close to here.
Yeah.
And, and I.
Stuff happens.
Call them and I also go shut the dumpster after repeatedly telling them, can you keep your dumpster shut?
Yeah, it's a conscious, is it any?
Right, but now that in and of itself would be a violation, so.
Any other comments from the select board? Do I have a motion? First of all, when you ask, any other comments to changes that you saw that were, other than the typos you already mentioned? Okay, cool. A motion?
I'll make a motion that we pass, amend Chapter Eight Camden Police Ordinance to Add A New Ordinance Entitled Clean Community Ordinance to the ballot.
Second.
Any other comment or discussion? Halls in favor? Five zero. And again, the comment that this will, this ordinance amendment to Chapter Six, to the Camden Police Ordinance will go on the ballot on June 6th and we will request to have the language for that ballot item on April 23rd, select board meeting. With that, the ordinance, excuse me, the public hearing portion of our agenda is complete and we revert back to our agenda to discuss June election summary report. Have anything to?
I do. This is as of today. So for the select board, we have a one three-year term position opening and we have one person who has taken out papers and returned papers and that's Mr. Ratner.
Ah. I did that, you're right.
We have one position on the personnel board and we have no takers of papers yet, so that's still open. We have two positions open on the school board. We have one person who has taken out papers but has not returned them.
Mm-hmm.
And also, we have six positions on the charter commission and we have one person who has taken out papers and returned them.
The deadline for this is Friday, right?
Yep, yeah.
All right, well, we encourage anybody who's gonna move real fast against the denomination as, otherwise we have to talk about Plan B on April 23rd, whatever that may be.
Plan B?
Yeah.
For what?
Write-ins.
Oh.
I mean, I'm just.
You're supposed to sound more dire than what.
Oh, no, no, no. Well, we're gonna close the town and not do anything. No, just that there are other ways, in certain items, we can do something.
Just for the charter commission.
That's only for the charter commission, right? We would not do that for the others.
So also, could we get some kind of clarification on the write-in procedure? Because I think that I was told that, we voted a while back, that you have to be a registered write-in.
Registered voter?
Like you have to register as a write-in.
I don't know.
Where that.
We can clarify that.
I can't safely say what the.
I wouldn't, yeah.
Insist on it.
Can you just look at Ask Katrina what the, if there's anything additional for.
Great question.
Yep.
I totally agree. All right, cool. Anything else, Jody, on the election summary discussion? I think that's about it or not?
Nope, that's all I had for, for that.
The next on the agenda, we were gonna have an update from Paul.
Inland Harbor, Maureen.
Right. Inland Harbor, but he's, he can't make it tonight.
Can't make it tonight.
So, but I know you have a, we do have a letter from him summarizing stuff, but I still think we should, whenever convenient schedule, Paul to come in and talk to the select board about the contents of the letter and if that's appropriate.
Absolutely, yep. And I think they're, they're drafting up some, sort of a draft on where we are today in terms of the substance of what they got, so I'll have him bring that with him as well so that he can.
I did read the letter preliminarily and I do have questions and I think we should do it in open forum at the select board, at either the 23rd or the 7th, whichever works for you all. Oh, the next item would be to set the date for the select board approval of the FY 20th budget. We don't have a lot of options. I would suggest we make that May 7th would be the, because this is gonna be printed in the annual report, not on secret ballot, so we have until May 7th at least to get it done for our final budget meeting, to have a select board budget meeting on the budget for our approval of whatever we want to prove.
Right, because it'll be nice to have Audrey back.
Absolutely, absolutely. And between now and then. Who said it again?
It's Audrey.
It's the dark-haired Audrey.
Yeah.
I think, yes, that's, thank you for clarifying, that's exactly why it should be May 7th.
Because otherwise we wouldn't want to run it right, right, right to the deadline.
No, 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 I think that, I think that will work. We have a couple other items for that, also for the open town meeting discussions, which we'll have in the next week or, next, but that'll be on the next agenda. Lastly, on the agenda, we have a Snow Bowl financial update. Jody, you wanna give us a little characterization of what it is as of what date and what looks, what we have to look forward to, if anything?
Yep, so we, the, what you have in front of you is as of tomorrow's payroll, so expenses are gonna be quickly dwindling down to much more tolerable amounts to spend. The electricity bills are all up to date and so I just actually saw one today come in and it was a little under $2,000, which is minimal from what we normally pay. So things are starting to go downhill.
Well, just to clarify for the public who's maybe not engaged with the Snow Bowl, it actually closed on.
It closed on.
March 31st.
Sunday, yes. Sunday, March 31st.
Yeah, Sunday, March 31st. So its operations are for all intent purpose closed as of that date. However, there are some lingering bills and payroll.
Utilities, payroll, and I think that's gonna pretty much wrap it up. As of today, we're about $54,000 in the black. We do anticipate, because we still pay the admin staff, which is Beth and Holly, until the end of April. So that's gonna total out to be about $6,600. And then we have some bills that have come in, as of today, there's about $11,000 in bills to, to pay. So we're looking, I'm, I'm guessing around $20,000 for expenses and it may go a little